What?
Where's this camera?
Uh, up here.
Oh.
It's always been there watching you Jenny.
I had no idea.
It's always there.
Okay. Oh, do you want me to start? We're good? You're good? Okay. Um, we are gonna call the meeting. If you'd like to sit down, if you'd like to stand, that's totally fine too. Um, welcome to Tuesday, May 20th, Board of Education Regular Meeting. Um, if we could, call roll please, Mrs. Knapp.
Mr. Avila?
Here.
Mr. Bernstein?
Here.
Mrs. Lasky?
Here.
Mrs. Sears?
Here.
Mrs. Phil?
Here. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to Section C, our meeting agenda statement. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. I also just wanna share that we will be going into an executive session at the end, um, but there will be no further action following our executive session today. Um, so we are going to go into our high school seniors showcase. I'm gonna let Kelly introduce.
Yeah, so we have Mr. Janatovic here, the high school principal, um, along with some students, I think, to present to us a little bit. This year, we kind of changed the format of our board meetings just to have our schools, at least twice throughout the year, bring students and kinda brag a little bit about what students are doing and what's happening in the buildings. Um, and I think it's been awesome to have students and their families here at the board meetings. So I'm gonna turn it over to you, Mr. Janatovic.
All right, thank you for giving us this opportunity. I'm gonna have the students come up later, let them sit down there for this point. Senior showcase is, is an opportunity to brag about what these students have been doing since the first time they've entered the board at Independence High School. Um, a lot of them have been with us since day one of kindergarten. Some of them have come to us since their tenth grade year, eleventh grade, twelfth grade, but they've all done fantastic things. The first portion of this, I do wanna just brag about some of the things that the senior class has done. I know we don't always get to take a look at some of the things, but I also wanna talk about where they're going and, and what they've accomplished. Up here, these seniors have taken 141 AP tests. So when you think about that, the number of tests that they take, we have two national American men's scholars and four government recipients. We know the academics is taking care of it. Our teachers do a fantastic job of that. Our students do a fantastic job of that. But, when you look at our music department, as you can see the success that we've had this year, um, and salaried, we have two superior degree excellence at the OEMEA Awards competition, ten superior soloists, and ten excellent awards. Our students are taking care of it musically as well. Um, I know when you come to a small district and sometimes you think about all the wonderful things that are going on and all the music aspects of it, we have a small, we have not as many kids to fill some of the parts that they wish to spend this job. Um, large group, our vocal went out to state this year. Um, we were a little disappointed with the two, um, but two means excellent, so when you really think about it, that is fantastic. And we looked at the results, the number of bands and samples that were out there, uh, we were obviously some of the best of that. And it was really cool to see how well our students performed in that. And then we have the dance, our musical production this year was fantastic. Um, I talk about it every chance I get, it's a cool experience. We had kids involved in the dance production from the back end to the front end. And then we have students from Independence actually win the spirit of the dance awards, which was voted on by the peers, which is a tremendous opportunity for our kids. Um, then you continue on to athletics, you know? We were Shadrin Valley Conference Champions in volleyball, softball, baseball, and track. We had postseason honors in girls volleyball, man was district champion and regional champion. We had a lot of conference MVPs, we had a lot of state qualifiers, we had a lot of Ohio, all Ohio athletes. Um, and we're not done. Um, I do know some things that I can't carry yet with some of our spring athletes and some of the accomplishments that they had. So we have a lot more awards coming. So, when we talk about those things, you know, those are the easy things to take care of. But, what I really wanted to talk about is like, where are our students going? Like, what are they doing? What are they gaining from their experience? When you hear from the kids, the kids are gonna talk about what their experience was. Twenty-five percent of our kids are going into the healthcare field. Twenty-one percent are going into business, twelve percent are going into dance. So what does that tell you? That we need to make sure that we're really providing those opportunities that we provide for our kids, that our kids are taking advantage of it. We got nine point five going into the skilled trade. If you look at our career center, um, the number of kids that have received industry potential from the senior class of 2025 is admirable. We have kids that are going to college with the trade, so they're gonna make money while they're in college. And then we have some kids that are going to work, and then some kids that have plans to start businesses. So you can see that we have well-rounded students. But I show this information because this is the area where our kids are really asking and wanting, 'cause that's where they're going to. So that's where we have to support, that's where we have to build, and that's where we have to continue to create opportunities for our students. Here's what they're going, right? We have some going into the workforce. We have a lot of kids going to some very prestigious universities. Um, I was starting to do the math today, and I know Mr. George is gonna help me get that out there. But for just first-year scholarships for next year, we have over half of a million dollars from the school that they're going to. That's not including the things that kids actually earn. Like, when I first multiplied everything up, like, some kids were earning like $20,000 a year from a whole school with like $3.5 million out of cash, right? But then when I did this for just the first year, there are kids over half of a million dollars to be able to go do some of these things. And over the course of their four years, a lot of this is renewable. So this is what we created, this is done with your hard work. So, really proud of, of the work and the places that our students are going to. Um, what do they wanna do when they go to college? You know, for fun? We got kids that want joint read life. I wasn't there, so I don't know what's exciting about that, but it sounds like they wanna be involved in a community, small school, opportunity to be run group. We have eleven kids that are going to try to play varsity sports. Um, some of them at very high levels, some are getting active money, some of them are saying, "I just wanna play." Band, choir, and music, we got eight of them that are actually going to be involved in some sort of arts after school. When you talk about a class of eighty kids, that's ten percent of your kids going into some sort of musical field. Again, they wanna be involved in pleasant activities, government leadership. There's a lot of opportunities and things that our kids wanna be involved when they get, um, to the next level. So, here's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna call the students up at this time. DeTaladavens, so DeTaladavens come on up, Sabrina, Anthony. So, I ask them these questions, right? Because the focus for our year this year and next year, right? We take the senior class, we take their success, we take the awesome things that they've done, and then we turn and build upon it, right? This group got me to take them to New York City. Um, something that every principal I know laughed at and said, "Why would you go to New York City with a group of seniors?" And I said, "If I could take two hundred eighth graders at some point, I could take a bunch of seniors." But winning was the best experience, it was the coolest thing that I've ever been part of. Um, and this year, it's just been tremendous all the way through. They've been leaders, they've been advocates for that. But, what I wanna do is kinda stick with our strategic plan and our strategic vision and have them kinda talk about three things. What was the greatest opportunity you had while you were at Independence High School? Like, to them, in their words, what was their greatest opportunity? Then I want them to share, what class were you most engaged in and why? Right? And then lastly, how has your high school experience helped you cultivate your legacy of excellence? So, I put you guys in random order. You're up first.
I prepared some notes to not create a couple of speaking. Thank you for having me. I'm Andrew Freeman, I'm staying here at IHS, and I'm gonna talk about a few things. It's a pleasure to meet you from the Biology Society. As I mentioned, I'm really interested in the environment and biology. When I asked what my greatest opportunity was at Independence High School, it's definitely working at the lab and near the board office and working there over the summer. Because I wanted to be an environmental science major. I definitely a big part of it, usually a lot of classroom, way more than you would do. Uh, what class was the most engaging? I live in a class called Environmental Science, and that inspired me to pursue that as my degree. And I got some reason to my final point about how basically I've been connected. I learned a lot that networking was important, I love fielding too, and especially to the staff fields. So I think that putting myself out there somewhat interested in the environment early is gonna help me meet people, like college professors and biologists I've already met, and I think I'll be able to meet more.
Thanks.
Sabrina George?
Hello everyone, I'm Sabrina George. Um, the greatest opportunity that I've had is probably taking a bunch of AP courses and having my teachers kinda guiding through stuff that was college-based and really propelling me in college. So I think it's kinda more of a wrong start. Another thing that I loved at high school was this club, it's called PEAT, Preventing Emergencies in High School. And this is about non-prevention, we go to the middle school and we protect, uh, maybe twice a semester to middle school kids. And I just think it's very helpful, it showed me that like, being a positive role model is just good steps to take. And I keep doing that, and hopefully it impacts younger generations, especially in this school. What classes have impacted me? Uh, as a student, I feel like it's kinda hard to grasp, you have to focus for forty minutes and then forty minutes just going class to class to class. And it's harder than that, so I'm out of there once in a while. So Mr. Minnis' AP Bureau class, we're super engaging and the stories that we tell, they've been told without teaching a story, it just seemed helpful to me as a learner. And, uh, going along with that, it's more hands-off. So like, the college-based learning, especially in the AP class. I chose what I wanted to write down, and I studied it, and I brought the materials that are just kinda zoning out and having a little bit of material there. So that was just a very fast. Another thing that I wanted to talk about is this stuff. Uh, this class just focuses forty to forty-five minutes of your day, every single day, getting a jumpstart on college searching and what you wanna do for regular essays. So I just, that block of time just helped me keep very focused. I found out what I wanted to do in that class. My legacy? Um, I would just like to, I would just like to, again, taking AP courses was one of, like, it was a great accomplishment for me, taking all those tests. And then also having something outside of high school was great for me, because I do the head of the dance, and I do this for about ten hours a week. And Independence allowed me to do this without being academically challenged and being a swimming, and having that, and being all the gloves and learning. So, that was just something that's actually mine that was supported outside of school. Why my teachers, they would ask me about it, and I'd be very interested in that thing. So, having that outside of school, I don't know if it impacted me, it's not only in school, my academic, being a good example, but communities that reach outside of school and the need of people.
And, oh, office.
Hi, I'm Alice Collinsfield. Um, if you don't know me, um, I came to Independence as a sophomore. I spent my first year at high school, and I tell this to everyone I've talked to about it, that I felt more support and just love, uh, from the teachers and staff in Independence in my first two weeks than I ever did at a private school. The staff, teachers, classes, obviously, everything here is just amazing and different than anywhere I've ever been. Um, my whole experience, the dump and short, that's really amazing. My experience here fulfilled me in ways greater than I could, uh, could have ever had in high school would. I worried that, like, coming here, being, you know, I mean, to a smaller school, I would kinda have a hard time finding my place, but everyone here welcomed me with open arms and just gave me endless support, which has allowed me now to be able to say that I'm the president of my senior class, which is awesome. It's just one of the countless opportunities I've received during my time here, but it's definitely what I feel I've raised and feel is special, because it's allowed me to spark a sense of leadership in myself that otherwise wouldn't have had a chance to shine. The curriculum at Independence is unique and engaging, um, as I said, unlike anywhere I've ever been. Um, I think the most engaging class that's been here would be Excel or American Sign Language. Um, with the leadership of Mr. Popa, this course offers something different than a lot of other schools do. Uh, you're not just learning about a language and translation from mass English, you're learning about culture, community, and the structure of this class is unlike a lot, and it's very interactive and creative, which has sparked my own passion for, um, allowing, or providing communication access for others, and has, um, sparked my interest in speech and phonology, which I would go and go to pursue. Um, and then, for legacy, being a part of the Independence High School class feels really special. Independence has, uh, allowed me to, uh, cultivate my impact on Independence. Um, just about everything that I said before, a lot of countless opportunities, uh, as they've also said, like, endless support from teachers, like, if you wanna be academically challenged, when you have things going on outside of school. Like, everywhere in this building is always here to give their best support, and it's really helped me feel, right, within that, in that, in that, at my school.
You know, just, just a small portion of the amazing stuff that we have at my school. There was another student that had a backup last minute, but one thing I wanted to share with that student, the career center student, was, has made sixteen thousand dollars this year working in their field while they're maintaining a 3.11 GPA, part two varsity sports, um, involved in all of these activities. Uh, and it's just an opportunity that, that isn't provided in other places. So, I'm thankful that they're gonna come out. You know, I know this is kinda different, I was like, maybe it's a sad time of the year, it's an exciting time of the year. You know, as I said, to, to one of the students, I don't know what they're doing. Like, I thought I would be more emotional on that last day, right? Like, I'm sad, but I'm not sad, I'm, you know, and I said, it's because you lived your high school experience in full. You have so many positive memories, but you know that your legacy and your memories are gonna continue to push you through. You're gonna feel it, you're gonna know it, you're gonna understand it, but you made the most of what you did. And these students have made the most of what Independence High School, and it's all been different. Um, and it's all different opportunities, and, and we have, you know, eighty-something more kids that have those same opportunities, but I don't think we have a lot to be here for five hours long, actually. So, um, you know, if anybody's wanna come to graduation, I can't wait for that. We're all, we're all coming, we're all salaried for the class of 2025, a hundred graders graduated last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Janatovic.
Yeah, for those of you who don't wanna stay, I was gonna say, those seniors wanna head out. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, moving on to our administrative reports. Um, for CBC update, did Mrs. O'Neill send you anything to share?
She did not. She's out of town and will be at our next meeting.
Okay, very good. Um, Ms. Knapp?
I, I have a lengthy update, I will apologize upfront. But I'm gonna start with something fun, 'cause sometimes people don't think finance is fun. But, this is a shirt that we are doing with our wellness group. And, um, the logo was created by one of our staff members who won the contest, which is really interesting and cool. And we have wellness dollars through our healthcare consortium that we weren't tapping into, and we were able to get them to give us last year's money and this year's money. So this week is Wellness Week. Every staff member's getting a shirt, we're doing, um, the Wellness Walk was scheduled for tomorrow. It's gonna cancel because of the rain coming in, and we're gonna reschedule that for Friday. And we're doing a salad bar lunch for everybody in each building at eleven o'clock tomorrow, which is exciting. They, we have a wellness journal that we're gonna be passing out, and we had smoothies from, um, I don't remember the name of the company, but it was a company in Brexville, Broadview Heights, that we, uh, got smoothies for every staff member on Monday. And then we're also getting magnets for, um, our healthcare program, one of our online things, so that people know how to reach healthcare when they need it at odd times of the day and night. So, pretty exciting. Hopefully everyone will wear the shirts and embrace the Wellness Week, 'cause, um, it's a really busy time of year. As a committee, I think we learned, it's not a great time to do Wellness Week in May. So we'll try to do that maybe October next year, when it might be a little bit less, uh, things going on for everybody. So, pretty exciting stuff with that, um, and we appreciate Anthem's Wellness Dollars and the Consortium's Wellness Dollars to support that initiative, so. And we're looking forward to see what we can do next year with it also. In addition to that, with the Wellness Committee, Francine Kane, our Transportation Nutrition Supervisor Director, she was our, she is our chairman, and she's been really instrumental, making sure everyone's aware of what's going on. The other thing we did was challenges, monthly challenges, where people got gift cards if they won. And they were all reasonable challenges, like, we weren't asking them to go in Tough Mudder competitions, but drink more water, sleep, things, things that we can do. So I think everyone embraced the fact that it was doable and we could all participate. So it was a really fun thing for us to bring wellness to the start of it, and I'm looking forward to see what that committee can do going forward. Um, now, financial stuff, which is fun for me and some in the audience, maybe. Uh, House Bill 96 biennium budget update. I'd be remiss if each meeting until we get a budget at the state level, if I didn't bring it up. Um, currently, we're at the Senate for review, they are finished with their testimony, everyone's going through what provisions may or may not stay. Um, and I know we sent out that, uh, communication talking about how certain provisions could adversely affect independent schools and other schools too across the state. So, in that, there's some property tax reform provisions that they're suggesting, eliminating Fair School Funding Plan, which is detrimental to all schools, capping district cash reserves, which would crimp all schools, and then expanding public funding for private education. Any mix of these, all or some, really would accelerate the timeline of schools coming to local support, asking for more help. So, it is, it is real important, if you haven't, if you would, please reach out to your local representatives to talk about how this could really make a lasting impact in a negative fashion to all schools in Ohio and to ours locally. So, um, we, in addition, our last additional operating money was in 2011 with the fixed sum or the emergency levy that was passed. So, we're doing the best we can, and we've saved that, and we've worked with that, and tried to make fiscally smart decisions through the process. And if that cap contains thirty percent or any percentage, that's pretty detrimental to what schools need to do, 'cause some schools, such as ours, we're, we have a plan in place and we have a reason. Levy cycles are built to build reserves in the beginning and you spend at the end. So it's like a bell curve shape with that. So, uh, the biennium budget is still in, in, in discussion. Hopefully, in the July meeting, we'll be able to speak to what they actually pass and approve. So, June 30th is the end of the current biennium, so hopefully they'll have that on target for a timeframe. That leads us into a capital project fund creation. One of my items you'll see later this evening is to create a capital fund. And what that is, a capital project fund, it's for the purpose of accumulating resources for fixed assets essentially, and for the acquisition, construction, or improvement of them. So, what we would likely use this for is to be able to think of it as a savings account, to put money into it to be able to save for turf replacement in the future, roof replacement, HVAC, really large mechanical or capital projects that we don't have enough in the PI fund to cover. So, um, when that were to happen, and it doesn't mean it would ha- happen right away. Um, you have ten years that you can fund that fund for, and after that, if you haven't used it for the purpose you've designated, you would need to transfer those funds back to the originating fund. Um, so its purpose is to truly act for our purposes, think of it as a savings account, to allow us to continually save to get some of these bigger projects in line and plan for them accordingly. The, uh, the only way it can be funded just is, is through general fund or permanent improvement, and donations or gifts. So you'll notice the language in there speaks to that. And we have to have board authorization to determine the amount of the fund. So, the amount of the fund is not determined yet, we will be looking at that as we go through this process, but the first step is to create it and explain the need for it and why we would wanna do it. Step two would be to continue to work on our facility master planning, our capital project planning, and kind of know where we wanna put resources at and how much of the resources we can afford to do that. So, that's the Capital Projects Fund. Source is also on my area tonight, which is our insurance coverage for liability fleet and cyber insurance. This is just our annual premium, just like your car insurance or homeowner's insurance. Um, however, I will be asking the board for an appropriation measure in June to begin it on a prepaid. Sorsa would prefer prepayment of insurance versus, um, paying in July, the month it's effective. They'd like to see that payment before July 1st. So, we'll end up having two payments this fiscal year for insurance premiums and going back to one after that. And the premium, you'll notice, did go up five and a half percent, and that's due to the district valuation increasing and our assets increasing. So, as that happens, they adjust the premium accordingly, just like our own insurance personally. And then Connect, which is our ITC, which is Information Technology Centers, we're looking to do a three-year contract with your approval tonight. Um, that locks in their current pricing structure for the next three years. And for those of you that don't know what ITCs do, they support our district in so many ways, honestly, but it's infrastructure, technology support, it's fiscal support, student services support, library support, with software platforms, services, and assistance. So, um, in our realm, when we don't know what's happening with our state software, they're the ones that help us figure out, like, the bumps and the bruises along the way. So, um, we're looking forward to doing a three-year contract with them. Then I have my five-year forecast on, which will be an exhilarating presentation that you're all looking forward to in just a few minutes, I know.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Knapp.
Mrs. Kogan?
Okay, um, you'll see on the board agenda that there is a Purple Star congratulatory letter that was sent to us. Um, the high school has now also earned their Purple Star designation for our military families, so they are joining the middle school. Uh, it is a three-year award, and then you reapply for it at the end. Um, and basically, the criteria states that you have a dedicated spot on your website where you offer resources for those, um, students and families, um, where milita- where they're in like a military family or they're, or changing. Some of the other stuff is, um, easy access for students to enroll in your district. Um, and if their parent is, um, active in the military and they have to move, um, that if they're staying here with someone else, that they can stay in the district. Um, it just makes it a lot easier for them. Um, so very proud of our high school for that designation as well. Um, the, uh, Ohio State, or, sorry, yeah, the Ohio State test scores were released. Um, we're still waiting on our ELA scores, um, I was kind of hoping they'd be out today. Um, but just wanted to note, the scores look, as always, really good. Um, one of the ones that, um, I'm kind of looking at is our Algebra Passing Score, Algebra I this year was ninety-one percent. Last year's, it was seventy-seven percent. So that's quite a, a jump in our Algebra I score, so, um, we'll be kinda taking a deep dive and, and looking at that. Um, some other things to kind of highlight, um, our fourth grade math teachers are killing it over there at IPS. Uh, ninety-three percent of those students, um, scored proficient or above. So, um, and then our, uh, high school, American History and Government are both at about ninety-five percent and ninety percent. Um, the rest of the scores, you know, kind of look like what they have been around the eighty-five, eighty-six percent. Um, obviously, we won't have the growth metrics yet, you know, those are always a year behind, and that'll come out in the fall of next year. So, historically, we always do really well achievement-wise. Our concern is always a little bit of that growth, um, from year to year, so we'll continue to look at that. Um, which leads me to, uh, some of the work we've done this year as it relates to growth and focusing on our curriculum, um, and making sure that we have, um, you know, high-quality curriculum materials. So in June, I will be bringing a recommendation to the board to approve the adoption of the Bridges, Bridges Math Program, which is, we'll use for our K through five students. Um, we had a math committee that was made up of teachers. Uh, we went and visited a school that is implementing Bridges. We had the rep come in and talk to us, so really excited about that. Um, we're waiting a little bit, we're still trying to make some determinations on middle school, um, and what program we're gonna use with that, so I'm hoping I'd have more clarity by June as far as what that program will be. Bridges only goes through grades five, so then you look at a, a partner, um, curriculum to adopt with that. Um, and also, I'll be bringing to you the recommendation for our science curriculum for our maps. Um, those teachers, um, pre-K to twelve, have been working with Missy Zender out of the ESC of Summit County. Um, they've created their, um, focus units for the year, and they're building their resource kits for that, um, focused on hands-on opportunities for our students. kits for that, focused on hands-on opportunities for our students with science. So I'll also be bringing that information to you as well. Any questions on those things?
Thank you very much. We are at Section F, Public Participation. It is the policy of the Independence Board of Education to hear public comment at board meetings. The public is invited to speak to any of the agenda items or other school topics at this time. Comments should be limited to three minutes, and if you'd like to share anything, you can head up to the podium so that we can hear you nice and clearly. Okay, we'll move on from public participation. Section G, Approval of the Minutes. This is a portion of our consent agenda. Approval of the April meeting minutes. These would be from our special meeting on April 7th and our regular board meeting on April 15th. Do I need to call roll or no?
Not till we go to the end.
Okay, sorry.
And then do we want to do, can we move superintendent recommendations up before the five-year forecast?
Sure.
Can we do that, Jen?
Yeah. Jen, is that okay with you?
I'm sorry?
Would you be okay if we moved up the superintendent recommendations before you? Is that okay? Gives you a minute to set up?
Sure.
Not that we don't want to hear what you have to say because it's riveting, but...
Riveting.
It is. Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Cogan.
Okay, so we're going to move up to superintendent recommendations. We have a lot of visitors here this evening, and I want to be, I want to be able to recognize that first. So I'm going to go quickly through, and then we'll go to personnel for hiring. You see the board policies on there for the second and final reading. The MOU for the Kent State University, this is for a student-teaching agreement. We don't normally put these on the board agenda, but Kent is kind of pushing us a little bit, so I'm fine with it. Basically, it just says if they give us student teachers, usually there's a payment that comes through the district that then the teachers receive for taking on those student teachers, so we put it on here. You'll see our contracts, those are annual contracts for out-of-district placements, so those are being approved for next year. And then the last one, number seven, is the fee structure. I know Charlene is working with me on after the board meeting tonight when these are approved, to do kind of an outreach to our community to let them know what's happening. So if you click on the link in there for the fee structure, I just want to highlight a couple of our changes. Our fees, I tried to find out when the last time our fees were raised, and I can't find that out. There's people who, I think, went to school here and are saying that it's the same fees as when they went to school here. So I can't find any document that says that we've ever updated our fees, although obviously the cost of the materials have risen. These are fees that parents pay for consumable materials. So these aren't fees for like the textbooks we're going to be adopting or things like that. That comes out of the general fund. These are consumable fees. So in K through 2 and 4 through 8, we raised the fees, I think it was $78, we raised it to $90. And grade 3 is $100, and this is because they have $90 plus a $10 recorder fee. We all know how important that learning the recorder is in third grade, so we'll have that $100 for grades 3. A new fee starting for next year for every student in grades K through 12 is the $30 technology fee, and we talked about that throughout the year. That is a fee that many districts charge, that handles a lot of the consumable licenses that our students use as it relates to technology. This is not unusual for a district to charge this fee. I feel like this is something that we should be charging. Everything that we, a lot of things that we have, have an online component, and you're billed each year for the seats, and you can't, the seats are consumed by the student, and then the next year you have to buy more seats, if that's the best way that I can explain it. So that will be an additional fee that will offset the cost of those programs. And then you see just the regular course fee. Some of those have increased. Those are high school course fees, just depending upon, you know, what it costs for the consumables within that class. So you'll go through all of those. And athletic pay to participate, that's another big one. We looked at surrounding districts, districts that were our size, districts that were in-area, out-of-area. That was another fee that has not been increased for quite a while. So next year, that athletic pay to participate fee for high school students will be $125 per sport. It's a cap of $125 per season, so we have a lot of students who play multiple sports in one season. They would only pay $125 for the one sport. We do have a family cap of $300. So if your student played a fall sport, you know, a winter and a spring sport, the family's going to only pay 300. If there's three children and they're all playing sports, it would cap at $300. So again, and for middle school, we raised it to $100 for the middle school athletics with a cap of $100 per season, and that $300 for the family. So we really didn't raise them a lot, they're minimal. I will say that, you know, the treasurer and Brett Deal, our athletic director, have really done a lot of work to be able to show the board what it costs to run a sport. The fees that we're collecting do not even come close to covering the cost that it takes to run a sport. When you think about all of the fees that we pay for transportation, a lot of districts charge a transportation fee for their athletes to take buses, we do not do that. The referee costs have increased over the years, the uniforms, the, you know, footballs, the helmets, all of those things. In some sports, the parents pay some of that, but it still doesn't equate to what we're paying overall for those. So that is an increase. And then you'll see the lunch fees increased. A lot of that is through, you know, ODE and the organization that we work with for food services that says, here's what we believe you should be charging based upon the cost of things. And so every year Francine goes in and runs the numbers, our food service director. So you see, primary school went up to $4 for student lunch, and the middle school and high school is $4.25. I may or may not have just gone to get McDonald's french fries yesterday for the first time in a long time. Do you know a small fry is $2.79?
Small fry?
A small fry. I know, I said the same thing. So...
I never get a small.
I only get a small, but I was like, $2.79, there must be something wrong here. So, you know, you're going to see these costs each year increase as the cost of food goes up. So any questions on the fees?
No, thank you for your work on that. I know everybody, Jen, Brett, you have done a lot of work to present us those updates and changes, and we did our best to gradually work those up so that we weren't shocking our families and our parents. So thank you for the time that you worked on that.
Agreed. Thanks.
Yes. There was a couple things, I think, that we're going to continue to discuss moving forward for some additional fees that we have some questions on for the board, but we wanted to get these on so we could get the communication out to families. And our registration opens July 1st, so we wanted to make sure these are uploaded into the system. Next, we're going to move to the personnel area of the consent agenda. We have a lot of exciting things going on in the district. Sometimes when change is happening, change can occur quickly. It doesn't mean that it's chaos, it just means that it's change, and we're going to handle that, and we're going to, you know, look at it as an exciting time for the district. So a couple things that are on the agenda tonight. We have a resignation, which I wouldn't have accepted in any other situation from Mr. Ebert, but you will see that he is resigning as the principal of the primary school. And I just want to kind of read a little bit, because I tried to like capture everything so I wouldn't forget anything, but this evening, I'm honored to recommend, after the resignation, you can stand up, Mr. Ebert. Come on up. Yeah, you guys stand up. Yeah, as I talk about you. For the position of Director of Human Resources and Business Operations for our school district, for the past six years, TJ has served as the principal of Independence Primary School. During this time, he's been a dedicated, visible, and trusted leader, known for his calm demeanor, except for when he's in his costume, student-first mindset, and deep commitment to this district. TJ's loyalty to Independence, his strong relationship with the families and the staff, and his steady leadership through times of both celebration and challenge have made a lasting impact at that primary school and in our district. What stands out most about TJ is his unwavering desire to see our district succeed, not just at IPS but across all buildings and departments. As we continue to implement our strategic vision and realign our leadership roles to strengthen our system as a whole, TJ expressed a strong interest in contributing in a broader capacity. He sees this central office role not as a departure from school leadership, but as a way to support all schools, students, and staff more effectively. In his new role, TJ will oversee key functions that are vital to district operations, including human resources, which we have not had, for both certified and classified staff, as well as business services previously managed under the leadership of Tom Drelling. His knowledge of our district culture, his understanding of building needs, and his collaborative leadership style will be invaluable assets as we continue to grow and move forward. So pending your approval this evening, I look forward to welcoming TJ Ebert to our central office leadership team as the Director of Human Resources and Business Operations, where his contributions will continue to strengthen the foundation of excellence that we are building together. So hopefully you will all vote 5-0 for Mr. Ebert. I mean, I think, right? Yeah. So we're going to move on, and then we'll go to the vote, and then we'll celebrate all of you. So thank you, Mr. Ebert. All right, next, moving on. I'm going to go with, you know, let's go with Ms. Hughes, since we'll follow, so Ms. Jody Hughes, so you get to stand too, sorry. All right, tonight I am pleased to recommend Mrs. Jody Hughes as the next principal of Independence Primary School. This recommendation comes after a thorough and thoughtful selection process. We had over 28 applicants for the primary school position. We screened more than 13 applicants for this position. We conducted multiple rounds of interviews, and ultimately brought four highly qualified candidates to the final round this past Saturday. I want to thank the four IPS staff members who participated in the interview process. Their input was incredibly valuable in helping us make this important decision. We were looking for someone who not only has a strong background in instructional leadership, but also demonstrates warmth, approachability, and a deep understanding of early childhood and elementary education. Based on the staff and family survey, we prioritize qualities such as strong communication, support for staff development, visibility in classrooms and in the community, and a commitment to building relationships with families. Jody brings all of that and more. She currently serves as the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment for Chippewa Local Schools, a role she has held for the last three years. Prior to that, she spent six years as an elementary principal and instructional coach. Her references described her as student-focused, highly relational, and an effective instructional leader with excellent coaching skills and a great sense of humor, which you need at the primary school. Someone who leads with heart and high expectations. Jody is deeply excited to join the Independence team and is eager to begin building relationships with staff, students, and families. She will receive a 10-day extended contract to support her transition into the role over the summer. So pending your approval this evening, we look forward to welcoming Jody Hughes as the next leader of Independence Primary School. So yes, thank you. Yeah, we can cut. Welcome. All right, yeah, so I said change. And so now, we have Haley. Haley, stand up. So Haley is going to be the next principal of the Independence Middle School. So we recently concluded a rigorous selection process for this position as well to identify the best fit for this important leadership role. After reviewing a strong pool of applicants, we brought three exceptional candidates to the final round of interviews which took place this past Saturday. I want to express my sincere gratitude to the four IMS staff members who gave up their time to participate in the process as well. Their insights and feedback were instrumental in making this decision, and I thank the staff for their dedication. The qualities our staff identified as most important in a new leader included strong instructional leadership, a student-centered approach, the ability to build a collaborative and supportive culture, and someone who brings both professionalism and positive energy to the building. And Haley Mueller embodies all of those qualities. She is currently the Associate Principal of AI Root Middle School in Medina, where she has served for the past two years. Prior to that, Haley was both a principal and an instructional coach in Cleveland, where she gained valuable experience in leading diverse learning communities. Her references described her as a relationship builder, a champion for students, an instructional leader, and someone who is all-in when it comes to school culture and staff collaboration. Haley is excited to join the Independence team and is also eager to begin connecting with the staff, students, and families. She will also receive a 10-day extended contract so she can run in there and hit the ground running. So pending your approval this evening, we're thrilled to welcome Haley Mueller as the new principal of Independence Middle School.
Oh, yeah, when we go ahead and approve them, and then we'll give them a gift. Or when we...
We can.
Oh, we can. Okay, so we're... Oh, because you have to go first?
Mm-hmm. It's all on consent, unless we pull it out.
Well, that didn't work out very well.
Then let's pull it out. We can pull out, and then you can just do a separate vote for the treasurer's report.
Okay, that's fine.
So we will...
So you're approving items. G.
G.
And then when's worst person first?
J.
G1, not J though, you're not approving H.
Okay, we will be approving G1...
I through J.
I through J.
G1 comma I through J5.
Okay. Promotion, please.
And then we'll come back.
So... Carrie?
I'll second.
Tony, second. Call roll, please.
Mr. Avila?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasky? Mrs. Sears?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes. Congratulations.
Motion passes.
Yay!
So, yes, we have a little welcome gift for Jody and Haley. TJ, I don't have anything for you. I could throw you a piece of gum out of my bag. We're happy you're staying. But welcome to Jody and Haley, and thank you so much for being here tonight.
And this is from the board?
Yeah. Yes.
Has your name on it?
Congratulations.
Yes. And I know you have your whole family with, you guys, if you need to go, you're...
Well, we're recording it, so...
You got it.
They'd be running around, right? Yes, okay, so we'll continue, I'm sorry, thank you, Jen. Yes, and you can...
You guys can continue.
Yes.
You do not want to stay, you do not have to stay.
They do.
Yeah. We're really, we're really throwing it all off.
I need this back.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard. Thank you.
She sings this one.
Yes.
And then here's her...
We'll be seeing you.
Haley and Jody, we do have something that we need you guys to sign off on really quickly before you head out.
Who's got to sign?
Jody and Haley both do.
Sorry.
Nope, it's okay. Hit pause. I know. Poor Jen. Yes, she had a minute to like set that all up, so this was good. Nikki goes, "I'm sorry, Jen, I can't sit through your forecast."
So crazy.
Yeah. You said seventh grade, I was like, that's six years past. You sent me, so he was friends with those guys, we parted with him in college.
I hope this is very much my entertaining...
No. Two people stay.
I'm TJ.
Ron and I think they're very, very...
From a professional finance...
Yeah, yeah. So even though Katie's sleeping. Just want you to know that. Yeah, what's, yeah.
And I think it's because it says enrollment. Right. And enrollment does not include preschool or CVCC for this, for this particular situation.
I think I could maybe title that better.
Because what happens is people see that as enrollment in our whole district, and they're like, wow, you guys are low, but you're not counting, those kids still come to school. We might not be funded full for them, but they still have a seat in our building.
Well, and this is where you have different data sets coming through, right? And we know that, because we work in it, but we do have different data sets. When you ask a maintenance person, tell me the enrollment, they look at you like, what enrollment? What do you want? Do you want all enrollment, including 23s? Do you want just, what they call what's the seats? Do you want funded? So I can also try to, if I can work with them to get different coloring for actuals, projected, and title that better.
That would be helpful.
So that way, we can maybe go through it a bit better. Because the reason you include it is to show why your state funding is continuing to decline. Right? Because it's attached to funded enrollment. So as funded enrollment decreases, your state share will increase. And if they take away the 10% cap on state share index, it would really take us down to maybe 44,000 or whatever. If that trend continues, and really what will be great is in November, because we'll have the October count, does that trend now come back up? That would be even better, is to see it start coming back up the other way, too. So then, your estimated revenues, your general fund revenues here, your local taxes and your other revenue combined to be 89%. So you'll see the heavy reliance, again, on local share versus state share. And our state share is really just Fair School Funding Plan and some little backreimbursements. It's not significant, per se, compared to the local share of taxes. And it's pretty interesting how much is business taxes versus personal taxes, and they actually have come up with a way to help us get a slide to show you that, so that's a little bit later. Just showing the reliance on that. So the reappraisal provided an increase in operating revenue. Our property value is 114.4%, versus 8% that was in from last night's forecast, because it wasn't up to us what it would go up at. The decrease in property tax revenue from '24 to '25 fiscal years was from that large, from a large unanticipated 1.4 million refund that we talked about earlier, and a, then in '25, '26, you saw a significant bump, because we got the property going exempt, and we got the unexpected tax payment that dropped to the tip. That was still in. So fiscal year '26, next to the school year, will be the first year we see the full impact of the reappraisal on two apps coming out. And hopefully, no weird anomalies coming through either. But our state foundation, coming back to that state funding and why it's important, it's under scrutiny in Columbus. Presently, the House passed version does not provide for final phasing or updated in cost inputs. And if you don't update the cost inputs, the state's leaving us at cost inputs of 2018. But so much has happened in seven years of cost, or eight years of cost. So to not update that, again, really doesn't help fund the students, by the way, the one who was designed to do that. State's support is always vulnerable, giving its reliance on the biennium, but it's, the reliance is on student enrollment, and again, that conversation we just had after funded part. So right now, we're getting 844 per student. If they remove the 10% of that, because we're at 10% minimum, they have to give you 10%. That's how we get the 844 per student number. If they remove that as one of the proposals, if it comes through, we could see that even drop lower. So it's pretty significant. Then, I wanted to show visually the three different versions that we could talk about right now. So on this next slide, this is what's happening on the different, if I model the different ones for sort of the different reiterations of the state funding proposals. The orange is the governor's proposal that first came out, and the green is our current forecast, which is really the House budget. And then this blue is what the Senate is talking about with a 30% cap in property tax reports, etc. It would plummet us, as you see. That the ending cash balance, if blue went through as proposed right now, we would be at an ending cash balance of 2 million in '29, and green, I'm thinking it's going to be 5.9. And the governor's budget proposal, sorry about the touchscreen, would have been 6.4. And that's not on the table anymore. So just to visually show you, because I think that's an impactful slide to show. But currently, we have a significant increase in our other revenue for '25. We already talked about all of this, the TIP payments, the property going exempt. Also, I would anticipate interest to demonstrate a sharp decrease in years '28 and beyond due to paying off the bond early. Our hold pay of the bond in '27, when they're callable, would take a significant amount of cash out of our balance, and that would then really mount a curve. So I did project lower interest due to that. And then just modest increase in fees and rentals, which I call soft revenue, because it's not revenue necessarily banked on to really do a lot with. Every ounce of revenue helps, but it is not a proportionate percentage of revenue. So for the expenditure side, we're looking at salaries and benefits being 76% without the ESC or contracted personnel. And then, again, our purchase services looks unusually high if you're looking at other districts, because most of our contracted personnel is into that purchase service right now. And we're working on changing that composition up over time, so I think you'll see that be changing over time in the next several years, too. Because as feasible, we're looking at bringing on some of that contracted personnel as direct hires when possible. Our salaries, though, are projected rate of growth 2.6%, which is lower than average or historical average, and that's due to the staffing changes that were made last year to this year. Retirements are continuing, and we continue to look at, trying to align staff as best we can. Our certified classified unions graciously agreed to a one-year rollover for 2.5% for next year, so, and I put 2% in for the remaining years. We'll be in negotiations then, like late winter or the spring with both unions. Benefits, this is an area that we need to work on. Fiscal year '25 was a 13% increase in medical prescription coverage, 20% increase in dental, and I actually have asked, I recruited some other help to go out for RFP for dental, because a 20% increase on dental is a big change now. And the 13% medical...
So that's why you see these guest events being eleven. I just wanted to bring that up so you would know why we did what we did there, or why I did what I did there.
And Jen, sorry, did these enrollment projections include pre-K through twelve?
They, no, it does not include preschool.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I tried to say that, but if you take.
Sorry.
No, great, I want to clarify, does not include preschool.
Okay.
So the preschool numbers would increase. It also doesn't include halftime, they, uh, the career center students are only halftime. That's not in the funded one because we're splitting funding, so it's a little skewed there too. But, uh, the funded form, like the formula to determine who is funded and who's not.
Yeah, I got you. Jen, can I ask you a quick question? Cause I think there's a lot of confusion when people look at that slide. Do we need to have, I mean, I recognize that that comes from a system where it's making this like, okay, you've lost or gained whatever over time. I just think in, it's causing people to be like, oh my gosh, you know your enrollment's gonna be that much at that time and like.
Why are you building?
Like, why are you buil-, like, I just feel like, that's something that this system is putting into place to say, but is that something that like?
So that question was asked at our town hall, and you were saying, this is just what we get, um, in state funding. They were not understanding, that doesn't include preschool numbers. Or, it, it does kindergarten though?
Yes.
It does kindergarten.
But also not CVC or halftime?
Because they're not full F T.
Right, so I think it just.
We've got large C V C C.
So then you just look at that and you're like, oh my gosh, you have declining enrollment.
Yes.
Well, we, but this part is factual, right, twenty to twenty-four.
Right, right, that's what we have.
That's.
The numbers we know, right. I'm just saying, when you go on like that and you're looking at that, you're like, oh my gosh, in five years.
Well, it just decides where you're putting your assumptions though. So it, we can talk about that later and how maybe you can make it look, you can do a formula, like a line graph or something, but.
I just haven't seen that before, cause I was looking to see if other people, again, they didn't. So I'm just trying to figure out, is that something that's hard for people to understand? And so sometimes it's like, is that something that, it's there. Yes, it informs your assumption maybe, but, you know, I'm just, I just look at that and I can see why that guy in the audience was like, why are you building?
Yeah.
That tells you that you're gonna have half the number of students you have now.
And we can also do actual and then, and then estimated, projected, you know, but that, that's not.
You can see if I could get it in two different colors, like.
Yeah, and I think projected is, who's projecting that, right?
Right.
Like, they don't know that, like, like in, they don't know that in Olmsted Falls, they're building a whole new development and more people are moving in. Like, it's doing it based upon over your numbers, right? The numbers that you've lost or gained.
It's doing it based on what we have and needs.
Right, that's, but it's doing it based on us, just the numbers. Not the town, the community, the number of younger.
Correct, I would need to tell them, hey, there's a projected development going on, buying their homes and expect four hundred students in that.
Yeah. Right. Right, I just, I mean, to me, that just is kind of shocking.
And I was trying to explain it better tonight so that people could understand it better, it does include preschool.
Yeah.
But also maybe including our preschool numbers or including our C V C C numbers, that could at least give like.
Maybe what I could do is add a home, like another graph that I make that doesn't come from the system to include.
And I think it's because it says enrollment.
Right.
And enrollment does not include preschool or C V C C for this, for this particular situation.
And I can maybe title that better.
Because what happens is people see that as enrollment in our whole district and they're like, wow, you guys are low, but you're not counting, those kids still come to school. We might not be funded full, full for them, but they're still have a seat in our building.
Well, and this is where you have different data sets coming through, right? Like, and we, we know that because we work in it, but you do a different data set. When you ask the E S person, tell me the enrollment, they look at you like, what enrollment? What, what do you want?
Right.
Do you want all enrollment, including twenty-three's? Do you want just, but they call once a season? Do you want funded? So I can also try to find to work with them to get different coloring for actuals, projected, and title that better.
That would be helpful.
So that way we can maybe go through it a bit better. Cause the reason you include it is to show why your state funding is continuing to decline.
Yeah.
Right, because it's attached to funded enrollment, so as funded enrollment decreases, your state share will increase. And if they take away the ten percent cap on state share index, it would really take us down to maybe forty-four hundred enrollment. If that trend continues. And really what would be great is in November, because we'll have the October count, does that trend now come back up? That would be even better is to see it start coming back up the other way too. So then, your, your estimated revenues, your general fund revenues here, your local taxes and your other revenue combined to be eighty-nine percent. So you'll see the heavy reliance again on local share versus state share. And our state share is really just fair school funding plan and some ones that roll back for your marshals. It's not significant per se compared to the local share of taxes. And it's pretty interesting, um, how much is business taxes versus personal taxes? And they actually have come up with a way to help us get a slide to show you that, so that's a little bit later. Just showing the reliance on that. So the reappraisal provided an increase in operating revenue. Our property value is one of fourteen point four percent versus eight percent, that was in the last night forecast, because it wasn't, it was, it would go up that. Um, the decrease in property tax revenue from twenty-four to twenty-five fiscal years was from that large, from a large unanticipated one point four million refund that we talked about earlier. And a, um, then in twenty-five, twenty-six, you saw a significant bump because we got the property going exempt, and we got the, um, unexpected tax payment drawn to the tip. That was still in that. So fiscal year twenty-six next to the school year will be the first year we see the full impact of the reappraisal on two acts coming out. And hopefully no weird anomalies coming through either. But our state foundation, coming back to that state funding and why it's important, it's under scrutiny in Columbus. Presently, the House passed version does not provide for final phasing or updated in cost inputs. And if you don't update the cost inputs, your, the state's leaving us at cost inputs of twenty-eighteen. But so much has happened in seven years of cost or eight years of cost. So to not update that, again, really doesn't help fund the students, by the way, the formula was designed to do that. Um, state support is always vulnerable, giving its reliance on the biennium, but it's, um, the reliance is on student enrollment. And again, that conversation we just had after funded part, so right now we're getting eight forty-four per student. If they remove the ten percent, and that's only because we're at the ten percent minimum, they have to give you ten percent, and that's how we get the eight forty-four per student number. If they remove that as one of the proposals, if it comes through, we could see that even drop lower. So, um, it's pretty significant. Then, I wanted to show visually the three different versions that we could talk about right now. So on this next slide, this is what's happening on the different, if I model the different ones for us, of the different reiterations of the state funding proposals. The orange is the governor's proposal that first came out, and the green is our current forecast, which is really the House budget. And then this blue is what the Senate is talking about with the thirty percent cap in property tax reform, et cetera. It would plummet less, as you see. That the ending cash balance, if blue went through as proposed right now, we would be at an ending cash balance of two million and twenty-nine. And green, I'm thinking it's gonna be five point nine. And the governor's budget proposal, sorry about the touchscreen, would have been six point four. And that's not on the table anymore. So just to visually show you, because I think that's an impactful slide to show. Um, but currently, we have a significant increase in our other revenue for twenty-five. We already talked about all of this, the tip payments, um, the property going exempt. Also, I would anticipate interest to demonstrate a sharp decrease in years twenty-eight and beyond, um, due to paying off the bond early. Um, our goal to pay off the bond in twenty-seven when they're callable would take a significant amount of cash out of our balance. And that would then really amount of revenue. So, um, I, I did project lower interest due to that, and then just modest increase in fees and rentals, which I call soft revenue. Cause it's not revenue necessarily banked on to really do a lot with. Every, every ounce of revenue helps, but it's not a proportion of percentage of the revenue. So for the expenditure side, we're looking at salaries and benefits being seventy-six percent without the E S E or contracted personnel. And then, again, our purchase services looks unusually high, you know, in other districts, because most of our contracted personnel is into that purchase circles right now. Um, and we're working on changing that, that, um, composition up over time. So I think you'll see that be changing over time in the next several years too. Cause as feasible, we're looking at bringing on, um, some of that contracted personnel as direct hires when possible. Our salaries though, our, our projected rate of growth, two point six percent, which is lower than average or historical average. And that's due to the staffing changes that were made last year to this year. Retirements are continuing, and we continue to look at, trying to align staff as best we can. Um, our certified classified unions graciously agreed to a one-year rollover for two point five percent for next year. Uh, so, and then I put two percent in for the remaining years. We'll be in negotiations then, um, late, late winter or the spring for both unions. Um, benefits, this is an area that we need to work on. Um, fiscal year twenty-five was a thirteen percent increase in medical prescription coverage, twenty percent increase in dental. And I actually have asked, um, I recruited some other help to go out for R and P for dental, because a twenty percent increase on dental is a big change now. Um, and the thirteen percent medical, we're in a different, uh, the Star Consortium, which grades us in different categories. And we're in the highest category premium level recently due to our claim design. So our projected rate of growth was six point seven two, which is higher than the average that we've seen. And it could even be higher, um, depending on where our renewal will be in October. So really, we need to partner with the Star Consortium and our union leadership to evaluate where we are with our options, costs associated with the premiums that come into it. Um, this is the driver of a large portion of our costs. When it's over three million for a district our size of just healthcare and education, that's quite a bit of money to put out to that. So we want to make sure we're getting, um, the most feasible plan design, premiums for employees, et cetera. And then, um, at the end of fiscal year twenty-four, when you put in, uh, E S E contracted personnel, we're at eighty-one point five percent of our expenditure. So as you've heard over and over and over, we are a service industry, which means eighty-one point five percent of our, um, costs is in personnel. So it's a huge component for us. Purchase services are continuing to grow. Obviously contracted instructional personnel continues, but first professional technical services that will need to continue. And the number of students and fees for tuition placements have increased over time and are likely to continue to increase. So even if the number of students doesn't increase, the tuition rates increase on us, so we still see purchase services growing each and every year. And then the supplies, uh, obviously we're seeing those increase over time. I mentioned the tariff that I saw for the first time coming through on an invoice, which was interesting. Um, and they're hard to predict because they vary year to year based on your inventory levels and what your needs are, what buildings may have. Um, but next year, their student consumable supplies are gonna go through the O nine consumable fee fund versus the general fund. So what that means is the fees we collect will go into a fund, and that fund will then support what we're spending out in fees. And we'll likely have to do a transfer over, because as superintendent code eventually, the fees do become the full cost. So there's going to look to be a deficit there that we're gonna have to take in the general fund. But we may see that fee amount, I would expect it to be different in some fashion for each year due to the possible change. And that's only three point three five percent of our district spend. Then capital and other expenses, these, um, we, we always have diligent working through the facility planning that we've been doing. And also, um, we do a lot of permanent improvement, so we try not to do as much through the general fund as possible. But creating this capital project fund will also assist, depending on the amount we choose as a board to put into that fund. It will at least help to start creating these savings account, as I mentioned, to get, um, funds available for turf replacement over time, for roofing over time. The roofing projects are really expensive, and sometimes you need to do more than one section to make it really stay for the time period that you need it to work for, so. Versus doing them in small sections, which is how we're doing it right now, as permanent improvement funds exist. And then watching the amount of transfers that we're gonna need for food service and athletic funds at the end of the year. Then our comp people expenditure, you'll just see that this is exactly what you would expect, it continues to rise over time as, as expenditures outpace revenues. Our daily cost to educate a student is a hundred twenty-nine dollars a day. And of our tax income, most of it's coming from the businesses and state support actually for taxes. So our resident property owner taxes thirty-five percent of the taxes. Just, but please recall, the tax base is local support and that over sixty percent.
Jen, what actually goes, what actually goes into calculate the daily cost? I mean, is that, um, calculation of salaries and all that stuff? Insurance and benefit, okay.
Exactly.
Utilities, everything.
It's everything. Then, just again, the rev, the revenue showing you, uh, cash balance going down. Uh, by twenty-seven, our cash balance should be around ten point four, and that's, um, that loss is a deficit spending amount we saw earlier. By twenty-nine, go to five point nine. But I want to speak a little bit to this, because I think this is important to see. Those cash balance days, the number of days of cash on hand, we dropped to eighty-five in twenty-nine. But I'm not sure that that's where we're gonna really truly be. And our cash reserve policy says at ninety, we need to come up with a plan to proactively address that through time. However, I don't know where our transfers will end yet, and I don't know what the biennium budget will do. So in November, if that number in the five-year forecast is still under the ninety threshold of the policy, I will, um, superintendent code, have a plan to get that. So it's not, so it's at ninety, it's a call to ninety. So I recognize that that's what it's showing, but I'm not confident, because there's still so many variables this late in the game here with the biennium, with not knowing our transfer amount. Um, and ours is whole ending in June versus May, like some of the other districts, makes it a little harder to project that too. So where we're at right now, the reappraisal's giving us our modest growth. We're able to push deficit spending, and we did not deficit spend in twenty-five. And I'm not sure we're gonna do it in twenty-six, but we should be doing it in twenty-seven for sure. And then the compounding effect of twenty-eight, twenty-nine, if it pushes us under the days of cash, we'll have to address that. That will be clear over the future, so that's where we are. Anything else? Any questions?
I wish you had more zeros at the end of our revenue.
(laughing).
That's okay.
Not the wrong end of zeros.
Yeah.
There are a lot of zeros.
Can you fix that next time? No. I do have a couple, that, that insurance, that's, that's, you said that was on the agenda and it was like.
Oh, Source Up?
Yeah, it was like a million, was it, how much was it again? Was it?
What's the premium?
Yeah, the premium. Like, do you normally shop around for that, or how does that?
So you, you do normally shop around for it, but you don't do it annually, because then you, if you're switching premiums annually, you can't get your premiums data.
Gotcha.
And you'll never have the, um, the experience, the loss ratio. So usually it's like every three to four years.
Okay, and then the turf, which you mentioned, which I'm all, I think it's, we should have been doing this years ago, I believe, but I'm glad we're doing it now, just saving up. Did we, do we need anyone to go out there and assess what our lifespan is currently on the turf, or do?
We will.
Okay.
And I would think that's part of the facility planning process, to be honest.
Okay, cause it's like, I would, back of my mind, I'm thinking like three years left, tops, but I mean, it could be more, hopefully, if we can squeeze another year out of it, but.
And the capital project fund, you can only manage one for ten years for the, for the, um, uses you designate.
Okay.
So by me designating, tonight, like Bruce, H Back, and all, it's not, it's not limited to those, but if for some reason we put the transfer in and we don't use it, in ten years, I'd have to transfer back.
Okay, and then the, the Columbus biennium budget, that's June thirtieth, that's gonna come out? Okay, so we'll know by then.
Well, June thirtieth, it expires, so then you wouldn't have a budget to actually, to stay.
But we'll have an answer by then, what they're doing or not doing, right?
I would think honestly by mid-June is pretty solid, because they're done with testimony, now they're just going back and forth on results.
Okay, and then Kelly spoke about the curriculum adoptions. I'm just curious, does this, I'm not saying that you should or if it's a good idea, I'm just curious, whether you could or not. Is this, does that fall into the five-year fifty thousand dollar? Like, could you take that money out of P I if needed, or does it normally come out of P I, or does it come out of general? No?
I think every district locally does it differently.
Really, okay.
Depending on how they wanna do it.
Yeah, I mean, I think depending on the money, most would take it out of their general funds, unless they've got a lot of P I money and they're not spending it.
Okay.
And, and another county that does a sales tax only, it's only a county in the state that does sales tax, a lot of those districts will do it out of P I because they have sales tax.
Okay, but it, but it does qualify to come out of P I if you so choose to. Could you do a hybrid?
Uh-huh.
Like, half and half or two thirds?
Yeah, I mean, I, I asked Jen that, I was very, I mean, you know, with the, um, you know, the O seven O account, you know, the creation of that, I'm like, well, what happens if, like, we need that access to that money for gen, like, that was my concern.
True, yeah.
Like, you know, if we want to do something that is related to curriculum instruction or assessment, and there's like a, or even like a hiring of a position or something, it's like, well, if we can't afford that, and it's like, is that money tied up in there and we can't access that? Now, you wouldn't be able to do that for hiring someone, but to Jen's point, you could then look at other things that are coming out of the general fund that could be allocated out of that O seven O or the, or the P I account.
Cause we certainly have a lot of expenses that would meet the criteria of either P I or O seven.
Right.
That are general fund expenses at this time.
Okay.
That if you look at where you're spending it from, it can alter those. Anything else?
Good question, Tony, cause that was my question.
Well, we're kindred spirits, Kelly.
Right.
Uh-huh, yes, I know.
Right.
Glad somebody doesn't hear.
Do you have any record of when that stopped? Cause I cannot remember when it stopped, but we had already been doing it with, with a thirty thousand dollar.
Was it in P I that you were moving to?
No.
Do you know?
I don't.
An idea of a year? Cause I can definitely, look, I just don't.
It was shortly after, I think shortly after we had, uh, getting the turf in the first step initially. And they wanted to make sure that they started to build up the fund to, to stack. And, um, so I know that at one point in time, we were two hundred and fifty thousand, you know, a thousand. And I just was curious when or.
I don't know any, I have not noticed anything in.
I am not familiar with the details.
Okay.
And remember when it would have been stopped, or I don't remember.
You know, who would know, um, who was that family living next door to Rick and Mary? Dolis, Bob, Fields. He was the one that was a huge.
Right.
Proponent, I wonder if he would have.
Right.
Just because, I mean, they knew there's, that we were gonna need maintenance on it, you know?
Right.
Cause I remember hearing that, but I know that was before I got on the board, so.
I think we talked about it, but I don't think anything was ever, ever set in stone.
The turf was before we got on the board, you and I got on the board though.
I know, but I was part of the turf foundation.
Okay, got it, got it, got it, okay.
It was, it was always, it was.
It was money. Or what can you do on this account?
I'm, I don't remember.
I don't think so, I don't.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
I mean, we've talked, we had talked about it, um, going for it, so it would build up, but I don't, I don't think it was ever done.
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me know, please. Um, so, and then the other thing that I have not mentioned, obviously the treasures report, which is just our financials from April. Then the O seven O, the five-year forecast, the insurance connect three-year, there are three then and now's, and just to be clear, the two on Huntington Bank are all my fault. I put the rec on, um, at, when I got the invoice, and I didn't, I didn't realize it was after it. So that's, those two are my, my mistake. And the donation is a LED video wall from Parker Hannafin.
I wonder where that's being stored right now. Where is it?
You know, Dave Cinek was here one evening.
Looking at the.
Looking to just kinda check it out. Yeah, I don't know where it is. That's a good question.
But we're still appreciative of the donation.
Yes.
Very much so.
Oh, yeah.
We really appreciate the donation and it will be beautiful.
Great addition, yeah.
It's gonna be a great addition.
If there are any other questions for the treasures report?
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Can I have a motion?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So move.
Second.
Carrie, Tony, uh, call roll please.
Mr. Vila?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasky? Mrs. Sears?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes. Click through consent, and now we are two K. No.
M.
We already did that.
You did your informational stuff? M?
M. Um, I'm not gonna read through all these, is that okay? Do you want me to read through all of the events?
Oh, gosh, wait.
Okay, there's a lot of events coming up for the end of the full year, we're excited. We will be at many of them. It's gonna be a good May. Um, okay, and, uh, board member discussion and action. We have our June meetings, um, our regular meeting on June fifth at six P M here in High School Media Center. Um, and then we have our special year in financial meeting, June sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Eight-thirty.
At eight-thirty.
A M.
A M. At the board office?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, okay, board member comments. I have a letter from Terry McInos, and Terry, um, put in her resignation, and the board has already approved it. Um, but she called me last night and asked if I would read the letter aloud to the board, and it is addressed to Independent School System. Um, I think she felt like she couldn't be here tonight to read it herself, um, just because she was worried about, I don't know, it's, it's hard, it's weird, she's put in a lot of years, it's hard to move on. So I think she just wanted to be here, but she couldn't, but she wanted to share a message, so I am going to read her message. Independent School System, I wanted to take a brief moment to express my gratitude and appreciation for the journey the Independent School System has afforded me to take. In addition to being a career of over thirty-seven years for me, the Independent School System has been a second home and family too. Thank you for the countless opportunities to grow, to teach, to learn, and to make a difference. Thank you for the trust placed in me, support through challenges, and the celebrations, big and small. The relationships built with students, colleagues, families, and the wider community have enriched my, me full, my full life beyond measure. It has been an honor to be a part of a system so deeply committed to excellence in education and the development of each and every child. As I close this chapter, I do so with I pride, affection, and lasting memories. With sincere appreciation, Teresa McInos, AKA T Mac, retirement class of twenty-twenty-five.
Aww.
Interesting.
It was very sweet, so, Ms. Mac was my sixth grade teacher, so.
She was my basketball coach, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She was my sixth grade teacher.
That's great.
Yeah, so she's, she's done great, and she's gonna be able to be home with her mom now, which is awesome, and she does plan to sub.
Yes, that's great.
Which is awesome, so, thank you for letting me share that, and we have lots of Hershey kisses to share from her.
Aww.
Um, and now we will move on to, um, executive session. We will be going in, um, for consideration for employment, I'm sorry. Um, can we have a motion to move into executive session, please?
Second.
You're on and here, call roll please.
Mr. Vila?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasky?
Yes.
Mrs. Sears?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Time?
In Hohler.
Seven twenty-nine.
Thank you for being here, guys. Do you want some Hershey kisses?
Yeah.
I have a lot, a bag full.
About her retirement?
Yeah, before she even.
Yeah.